Good evening, welcome to the town of Ankrum. June 5th Planning Board Meeting. Christine, could you call the roles?
Yep, Don Tash.
Here.
Jessica Lovelace.
Here.
Joe Crocco.
Present.
Palmer Irving, yeah. Philip Hack.
Here.
Sarah Porter.
Here.
And Tom Bernadette.
Here.
Aaron Robertson.
Yes, we have six members and alternate number one, two, seven to be vacancies for the evening. Welcome, Sarah. Okay. Approval of minutes, is everybody booked over the minutes?
I have a correction through the May first minutes.
Okay.
It was, I was at work, but I recorded during the meeting.
That's pretty good.
And I was really confused about feeling rebound.
Anybody want to take ownership in the comment? Let's see. Should we strike it from them?
I'm sorry, which comment?
Which comment was that?
You know what the sound a little bit.
Think as close as I can go.
None in the first minutes on page four.
Yeah.
Hey, anybody remember making that? Statement or that description?
I asked how many know how it would affect the home so might have been made.
Okay, so let's, let's make that done. Don Tash is taking over.
Who was that?
And then also there's on. Page two below public comments, the second paragraph. Third sentence doesn't make any sense to me, but maybe I'm not reading that. I don't know. Oh, here. This paragraph. Is that Ms. Robertson? Then. I haven't gotten to the one thing yet.
Anything else from the? May first minutes? Take a moment, take a motion.
Make a motion through the May first minutes.
With corrections.
With corrections.
Second.
Favorite.
Bye.
That's good. May 7th minutes. It was.
I'm going to approve the meeting of the minutes from the 7th.
Second. Second. All favor.
Bye.
Approved, moving on to. Correspondence. There has been some, but it'll be. Acknowledged during each application's presentation, so. We're going to pass on that and conflict checks. Conflict checks.
The being recused, yes, I'm recusing myself from the solar farm.
Okay. Thank you. Please, please don't participate.
No.
All right. All right, moving on to the agenda, all business, Ankrum PV LLC. Special use permit and site plan, this is the solar. Anybody here for the application?
No.
It's just.
Is that better?
Yes.
Great, all right, good evening, everybody. My name is Sierra Hopkins, I'm here tonight on behalf of Rick Energy, we're proposing the Ankrum Solar Project. I'm here with several of my colleagues tonight, Rob, who most of you have heard from before at this point. We also have Nick here with us, who is on our environmental permitting team, he is our seeker expert. And we have Sheila as well of Wendell Companies, our civil engineer on the project, so engineering and technical expert on the project.
Excuse me, just, what are you, how are you related to, are you the attorney or?
Oh, developer.
Excuse me?
Developer.
You're, you're part of the development team.
Yes.
It was never clear exactly.
Oh, yeah, a project developer.
Thank you.
So we're here tonight for the third public hearing on the solar project that we're proposing. And at this point, we believe that we've addressed all of the questions and comments that we've received up until this point. And so we're ready to begin the seeker review and we will defer to the board now.
Have you made any changes since the last meeting to the plans?
We submitted, we made a new submission, I think it was several weeks ago before the submission deadline in May.
Can you just briefly go over what was changed to the audience?
Sure, so I think the most significant change was to the landscaping plan after we did site visits and spoke with the board and consulted with neighbors, we added additional screening on one of the property lines of the project. The rest was just editing the limits of disturbance, which we brought down from 9.93 acres to 9.4 acres.
Okay, that's, that's the extent of it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'd like to go on to the secret review, we're going to go through the the part two, item by item.
Okay.
We have a complete record of of us going through it, so. First part is impact on land. And I, I'll read the I'll read the statement and then we got to decide if it's small impact or moderate to large impact as we go through each and every item, so impact on land. The proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet.
Do we know what the water table is there? I would assume it's not that it's more than three feet since it's farm.
Yeah, I, I would think so too, but let's see what they've. I want to use their, their responses.
Or you don't know the answer to that.
It's in the book, the, their EAF submission is in the book. So we should have that next to.
Under the first green F pad.
Okay. Yeah, okay, you just saw land, okay then. Okay. All right, let's. Is there water at less than three feet?
According to the submission, it's six points greater than 6.67 feet.
Okay, so that's small.
So we're small.
Yeah. The proposed, proposed action may involve construction on land, I read that one already. Proposed action may involve construction on slopes of greater than 15%.
Yes, but 7% of the site is 15% or greater.
Okay.
So that's probably.
Small. Small or moderate.
Small.
Small, okay, yeah, yeah, I agree. General action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet, they're saying.
They say no.
Not no. 13.67. So that's a no. Proposed action may involve excavation of more than 1,000 yards. No. Proposed action may involve may continue for more than one year. Shouldn't, no. Proposed action may result in increased erosion from physical disturbance or vegetation, including treatment of herbicides.
No.
No. The proposed action may be located within a coastal erosion hazardous area. Other other impacts, not. Moving on to geological features. Specific landforms. Attached.
Like no. Mineral sources games.
Proposed action may affect or is adjacent to geological features as listed on the natural, national land. National natural landmark, now, now. Proposed, okay, another impact, so. That's now, moving on to surface water. Proposed action may create a new body of water.
Now.
Proposed action may result in an increase or decrease of 10% or more than a 10 acre increase decreases surface area of any body of water.
Now.
Proposed action may involve dredging, no. The proposed action may involve construction within an adjacent adjoining freshwater title bed banks of any other water body, no. Proposed action may create turbidity in the water body. No. Proposed action may include construction on one or more intake or withdrawal from surface water, no. Proposed action may construct one or more outfalls or for discharge or wastewater or surface water. No. Proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source to stormwater discharge that may result in degradation of receiving water bodies, no, proposed action may affect water quality. Any by water bodies within the downstream, no. Those action may involve application of pesticides, no.
No.
What proposed action may require construction new or expansion of existing water treatment facilities. Okay, get skipped for, okay, good. I'm just only can skip four because.
Well, we just have to go to the big questions for, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, in fact, the ground water.
Right.
So no, then we can skip the rest.
Yeah. Impact on flooding.
No.
No. I think we can skip all of it, so that's just no.
That's up there.
Yeah, impact on air. Shouldn't be any admissions from this thing.
No.
No. And impact on plants and animals. I think we're going to include this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Proposed action may cause reduction or population loss of individual of any threatened endangered species on the state or the federal government that the use of the site or found on, over, or near the site. Some of this stuff is self answered when you.
Yeah, and it said they're identifying whitetail deer, various small mammals and sunbirds.
What page did you see that on?
It's on the top of page 12.
But also we have.
Then it goes to, to.
To the.
To O, I mean, to. To O, yeah.
To the endangered.
Yeah.
What do we have, small impact, moderate impact?
I would say small impact.
Small impact, okay. Proposed action caused reduction in population or loss of individual of any threatened. Oh, I read that one, very sorry, I was saying some proposed action. Reduction in degradation of any habitat used for rare threatened. Listed New York State federal government.
No, small impact.
Proposed action, reduction in population or loss of individuals of any species conservation listed on the New York State federal site or found over or nearby the site.
No.
No. Proposed action may result in reduction migration. Deep.
Degradation.
Degradation. Having that used by species of special concern conservation use listed on the New York State federal government.
No.
Proposed action may disminute, may diminish the capacity of a registered natural national natural landmark disorder biological communities that was established to protect.
No.
No. Those action results in the removal of or groundwater disturbance of any source of any portion of designated significant natural community.
No.
No, proposed action is substantial interfere with nesting breeding, foraging of over wintering habits for prominent species that occupy or use the project site, no. Proposed action requires conversation of more than 10 acres, no. Conversion of more than today, excuse me. Rose action, commercial, industrial, recreational, lobs in use of herbicides or pesticides, no. No other impacts. The impacts on agricultural resources. Proposed action may impact soil classification, we're going to include one. One through four.
No.
No, no, yes, yes, that's farmland.
Yeah, but is it going to affect the soil classification? Well, change the classification.
The area disturbance is 8,000. Those actually sever cross or otherwise limit access to agricultural land. Which one? Which one? Yeah, I'm trying. The proposed action may impact soil classification, which in soil groups one through four of the New York State land classification system.
Yeah.
No.
I don't know, I mean, it's, it's, it's farmland.
But it doesn't change the classification of the soil. Yeah. It's not going to alter the quality of the soil.
Impact of the soil classification.
Okay.
I'm not even sure where the, where this is going, just being far.
The proposed.
I think it's just way.
So right now, both the center of that area is about 6.5 acres. There may be partial continuity farm. As is, as far as impact of soils, there's no soil that's very acceptable set bit within the right area. Diet from rose construction. MSG soil groups that are on site. Impacted.
Okay.
Believe in that is minimal. Just there is things are also a lot of there was a lot of that load down there, the smoke in that hill. As, as far as the grading.
Yeah, you've basically following the topography of the fields.
Correct.
Yeah, it's not.
We have to know, it's going on, it's smoking side of the hill. We've got to be, if you look on the map. Why, why? This is a danger to be fulfilled.
When you, can you point out what this gentleman is speaking of?
We probably reference an exception, that's in between the two arrays. I'm aware that the body where that speaker slope is. Again, the grading is showing the civil plan. Instead of we do find as. Any road has extensive. Right. But there's significant. So the, the detail that they're actually using is the urban tax, that's for, or like EDC design, it's definitely standard on the potential. Drive on your half.
Hey, what's the board's feeling, they, do you feel there's been a lot of regading? Yes. We, we. Yes, they'll, they'll dig a trench to put the underground power, underground power lines in, but. Gavin Ryan, we have a grading plan.
Uh, yeah.
And you pointed out, so we can look at it and see. That's I, I don't think that's. That's I. Want, want that job too?
Where is it, on your site? Well, here's.
I mean, our engineer didn't mention anything about excessive breaking.
The largest slope is.
It weren't road profile.
There's a road profile.
Yes, now, yes, yes. We are still.
It's essentially just following the contour of the land.
Well.
Yeah, the road, the road profile just follows the.
Yeah, I mean, this is, excuse me, can everybody buy it up, buy it down, please?
Yeah, can you just, C 301, you know.
Yeah, 103.
She, C 301 will probably have the, the most amount of detail regarding the proposed grading.
302 shows it exactly versus the land.
There's also a profile for reference. The, the proposed access road generally follows existing contours. As mentioned, there is expected regrading at the entrance, just to adhere to the emergency response requirements on grade percentage, so that way we can promote.
Building inspector or the fire marshal reviewed the road.
So we have met with the zoning enforcement officer, Ed Ferrato, who had reviewed it and passed it along to the fire department. We received no comments from the fire department regarding our design.
Okay, so. In our opinion, there's no real major regrading, there might be a couple of feet pushing around, but I drove it in my truck without a road, so.
I still don't, I still don't think that it changes the classification of the soil. So for the point of where we are on our.
Yes, yeah, no, it doesn't change the classification of soils.
Right.
So. Yes, we're going to go through. The proposed action may sever cross otherwise limited agricultural land includes cropland, hayfields. I mean, we verified that nothing with this road was going to prevent farming of.
Farming of the other field.
Yeah, we verified that. So it's small. Those action may result in excavation of compaction of soil profile of active agricultural land. Yes, no, but I think it's small.
Small.
Part ones, right?
Yeah.
The proposed action may be irreversible, irreversible convert agricultural land to non agricultural land. Otherwise, more than 2.5 acres or more than 10 acres, if not within an agricultural district.
Small.
Yes, well.
Thoughts?
Small.
Small.
Because it can be after the decommissioning.
Yeah. Go back. Yeah. Those action may disrupt or prevent installation of agricultural land management.
No.
No.
Proposed action may result directly or indirectly in an increased development potential or pressure on farmland. No. Those project is not consistent with the adopted municipal farmland protection plan.
It's in our comp plan.
In our comp.
So I hope.
Yeah. Moving on. Number nine. That was, that was eight. Number nine. Proposed action may be visible from officially designated federal, state, or local scenic aesthetic or aesthetic resource.
No.
No. Proposed action may result in obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views.
No.
No. Proposed action may be visible from publicly assessable vantage points. Seasonally screened by summer foliage, but visible during the winter season year round.
Yes, to a certain degree.
Yeah. And it's something of a little.
Yeah.
So is it small or moderate impact?
I would say moderate.
I would say moderate, you can be analogous with. Green.
Okay.
I was, I was, I think from the visual impact assessment that we provided. I mean, in a straight line and we illustrated, it's across to like 2,000 feet, which is just under a half a mile off the road in a straight line. Which is just under a half a mile off the road, in a straight line. With the topography and natural dedication along with the proposed vegetation. Again, the visual impact assessment I was provided. I mean, when you look at it, you really are having kind of stare to find where the array is in that. Um, and, and in addition to that. Um, you know, you're, you're traveling fifty-five miles per hour, so I, I would say from visibility. When it's that far away with natural undulations and dedication, uh. I would argue you say that's moderate, I mean, I, I encourage you.
We said it was moderate.
No, no, but I would say it's minimal.
Okay. No, not during this period, sorry. Before we close the public hearing, we'll take whatever questions. Um. Where are we?
I mean.
Yeah, we said it was moderate, so.
Uh, yeah, I think, and then also the entryway.
Yeah, I mean, if you take it all together, I mean, I would lean more towards moderate.
Is that entryway any different necessarily than like? A driveway, but like, you have.
It is, because there's a lot of different things that normal driveways.
Six giant, like, you're putting six giant poles.
Yeah, six poles.
Maybe not the best, right?
We're gonna, we're gonna go with moderate. Um.
See every day too, so.
But not so many altogether.
You do, we knew, you proposed. I just felt wrong side, but.
Well, right, okay, but it's one question out of.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we have, we have to answer it the way we see it. Initially, so. You're right, it may disappear to most people in time, but. That's not the way we're seeing it right now, so. What number of my options? Vantage points, uh. The. The situation or activity in which the viewers are encouraged, engaged while viewing the proposed action as a routine travel by residents. Including travel to and from work, recreational, or touron-based activities.
Well.
Small or moderate?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's.
I think it's moderate, well.
Okay. Prox action may cause, uh, is meant to dis- diminishment of public enjoyment.
So, is that, is it moderate for, for D one and then? Then, small for D two?
But we both, moderate for both, I think.
There's no real tourism or recreational activities on reading.
Well. You're using it to get from point A to point B.
Yeah, that's the first, that's, that's travel, that's routine travel.
But that's residence, that's a difference, it's just residence and non-residence. I mean, we can say the other second ones, but I'm a few.
Yeah, I just, it doesn't seem like it, yeah, the second ones.
That's fine, I do agree, it's more impactful.
Yeah, you're not next to a, to a park or something.
Yeah, fair enough, okay.
Uh, F, are similar projects visible within the following distance of the proposed project?
No.
No. And other impacts, no, so. The impact on aesthetic resources. Obviously, there are sharp contrasts, what are we gonna check?
You go, you back up to the larger question?
Yeah, mine.
Yeah, I'd say yes.
I, I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, it's. Yeah, it just.
All right.
It says the proposed action is obviously different from current land use patterns.
Yeah.
Clearly, it's corn or.
Okay, moving on to ten. Impact on historic or archaeological resources. Proposed action. Occur wholly or partially within a substantially contiguous to any building, yeah, no.
We're gonna say that would be that whole.
Yeah, no, the whole thing, right?
No, we, we go back and. I go back and answer that because we have to go through this first. Uh, proposed, uh, the proposed action may occur only or partially within the substantial contiguous area. Is designated New York State Historic Preservation Office.
On the whole, we want ten here.
Yeah.
So, if it's, if it's not an historical.
Oh. Oh, we can just skip.
Yeah, just skip it, because it's.
All right, sorry, missed it. We'll skip it. And then we'll get, skip this. Appreciate it, okay, so then we're on eleven. Impact on open space and recreation.
That's, no.
No. Impact on critical environmental areas.
No.
No. Impact on transportation.
No.
Impact on energy.
No. I mean, not in that kind of.
Well, hold on. Yeah, this is yes. Right, because we're, we're gonna require the extension of an energy transmission or supply system to serve more than fifty single or family two fam- or two family residences. Or to serve a commercial industrial use, so this is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to do this, yeah.
I think, so, the intent here is. Monitor and assess the after. So, overall, I think, yes, there is an impact on you, but you are creating energy.
You're not sucking it.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but we have to.
No, no, we get it, but we need to answer this.
Yeah.
Pretty clear.
No, no, we, we understand, but the question says, or to serve a commercial or industrial use, which is what we are doing. So.
Yeah, A, proposed action will require new or upgraded existing substation. I would say no, no. Proposed action require create an extension of energy transmission. Or supply system to serve fifty or two hun- or fifty single or two family residents to serve a commercial industrial use.
No.
Well, yes.
No.
No. Require the creation or extension of.
Think you're reading it back.
Supply system. It's something.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, yeah, the letter, the letter of this is, the answer is yes, but the intent I see is, oh, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so we'll say no.
Yeah, utilize twenty-five. Mega watts per year.
No.
No.
No, proposed action, heating or cooling or more than.
No.
Alright, so. We answered it, but.
It is no.
It's no.
Yeah.
Impact on noise, odor, and light, no. No. Well, there, there was a discussion about the transformers emitting. Sound, but. Um, I think we should just answer this because. Um, there is some generation from, that's the transformers, right, or the?
Inverts.
Inverters.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's our sound regulations.
It's not above our.
It's not above our sound.
No. Alright, impact on human health. Uh, A. We're gonna go through this, you think? Okay. Prox action is located within fifteen hundred of school, hospital, licensed daycare, home, nursing home, or retirement.
No.
No. Uh, sites undergoing remediation.
Uh-uh.
I don't know. Uh, completed emergency spill minute remediation.
No.
Site action is subject to institutional control, limiting the use of the property.
No.
No. Prox action may affect institutional control measures that will put us, that will. That were put in place to ensure the site remains protected from environmental, human health.
No.
No. Prox action is adequate control measures in place to ensure the future generation treatment. Disposal of waste will be protected of the environment and human. No, no. Proposed action involves construction, modified style of waste management.
Okay.
Prox action may result in unearthing of solid or hazardous waste.
No.
Prox action may result in the increased rate of disposal. Of solid waste, no.
No.
The proposed action may reserve. May result in excavation or disturbance within two thousand feet of a site used for disposal.
No.
Prox action may re- may result in migration of explosive gases from old landfill.
No.
No. The proposed action may result, result in contamination of leachage from the project.
No. Okay.
Alright, consistence with community plans. No.
Yeah.
Well, no, it says, it says it's not consistent.
Proposed action is not.
The double negative, so it is consistent, so yeah, so it's no.
Consistent with the community character.
I guess we should go through this one.
Yeah, let's go through it, okay, proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facility structures, errors. Areas of historic important importance to the community.
No.
No, proposed action may create a demand for additional community services.
No.
No. Proposed action may displace affordable, low-income housing.
No.
Supposed action may interfere with the use and enjoyment of official, officially recognized or designated public resources.
No.
Proposed action is inconsistent or predominant architectural scale and character.
No.
Prox action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape.
Yes.
Mate, yeah.
So, is that small or?
Moderate.
Moderate, yeah, okay. So.
I know it's. New project, uh, but it is consistent with, but on the end of the plan.
Yep, yeah, we. That's the first one, we're on a different one.
So. Next.
That's it.
Well, we gotta make a determination now, based on our.
Before, and, before a determination, it, it, but it is a law of applicable classes that you. Done this, you, either you're engineering or legal counsel, uh, service, there are five prior to making a determination. And the Astro provided by the applicant, uh, can be utilized.
We'd be happy to do that, right?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
Um, so we would, uh, ask that, uh, as, in, as that happening, that, uh, um, you thirty-nine, I have their, their own need. The county, that's the living environment, so they.
What did we just get today? What came today at two o'clock?
I didn't see anything.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, something came today. It was from. It was from George, I thought it was in the Dropbox.
Very little bit of the old.
I know. Well, you know what, sorry, it was about, it was about Route Eight. It wasn't just.
The county, county review.
Yes.
That needed by the planning board before any, uh.
We did get it, we did, we got a county review, that's what I'm trying to find.
We got a county review.
Yeah.
We're, yeah, it's, it's, uh.
Yeah, here it is, six hours ago, it did.
No, I think they said it.
They, 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 they approved the project with some caveats or some suggestions.
You don't have that?
No, I follow that, that's okay, we, we can get it to you.
Yeah. Yeah, that's in the Dropbox, it just came, that, we just got it six hours ago.
Oh, but, but it's under correspondence?
It's, uh.
I know, I saw it.
It's under, it's just, it's in the, it's in the, no, it's under revised submission, it's just the first thing, it's just a letter, it's in the folder. It's called twenty-five oh one oh CCB rec letter.
Yeah, Sarah may have sent it to me separately, but.
See?
Yeah.
No.
So, so look, it, look in the, in the general folder of Ancrum Solar PV LLC, and then there's four folders.
So, going back to your request, we have a planning consultant and an engineering consultant.
Okay.
Uh, and you wanna pick one, or you want us to send it, send it to both of them?
I would say, uh, both, uh. Planning consultant was, uh. Probably a little bit more on the, I mean, on the, so.
Okay. Alright, so. Somehow we have to get this. We have to get this, that's the letter, right? Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, that's.
The C, you're looking at this, the C, yeah, the CCB referral, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they, they make some comments, but they approve the project.
Typically, the founder of you, uh, will occur, they either recommend to approve or not to approve the project. And then the comments provided are recommendations or considerations. Uh, for the planning board to look at, again.
Can we, can we read the comments?
A lot of them.
Yeah, yeah, here, you want to read the comments?
Yeah.
So, so they.
We could just read the comments and we'll give you a copy of it, but.
Yeah, so the recommendation is approval. And the comments are. The CCB, CCPB suggests that the project be evaluated for compliance with the Town of Ancrum zoning law, which is done. Emergency access, the CCPB suggests that local fire chief review the plans in regard to fire and emergency access. The CCB notes that a Knox box is proposed at the array access gate. Stormwater, the project will physically disturb more than one acre of land and therefore will require compliance with the Nice Deck SWIP. Then the CCB notes that a SWIP was submitted.
Ag SWIP submitted.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ag data statement. Project is lo- located within five hundred feet of tax parcels, which appear to contain actively farmed land within a certified agricultural district. Pursuant to three oh five A of New York State Ag and Markets Law, any application for special use permits, site plan approval, use variance, or subdivision approved. Require, requiring the municipal review and approval, that would occur on the property. Within a New York State ag district containing a farm operation or property boundaries. Shall include an ag data statement, which we have, right, we have an ag data statement. Access drive, the proposed improvements for the access off eighty-two require review and approval from, uh, the Department of Transportation, do we have that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Uh, internal road, the proposed access road is shown as a dead end with two T turnarounds inside the array perimeter fencing. The road does not provide access around the perimeter of the array. CCPB suggests that the applicant provide information on the means of accessing the remainder of the array. One additional T turnaround is proposed near the access point off New York State Route eighty-two. New York State Fire Code requires turnarounds at specific intervals for fire apparatus for driveways exceeding five hundred feet in length. The CCB suggests that the applicant provide information on compliance with this standard, which you'll do. Um. And we have visual impact and screening. There's potential for visual impact as a result of this community-scale solar energy system. The proposed solar array, although situated on the rear of the parcel, may be in stark contrast to the eucalyptic nature of the existing site and surrounds. The FEAF supplement reads in part that the project site is not visible from any public vantage point. The submission includes a visual impact assessment illustrating existing and proposed conditions. There is existing vegetation and minimal landscaping is proposed, providing screening along a portion of one side of the array. The CCPB suggests that a termination be made regarding the adequacy of the proposed mitigation measures to minimize visual impact. For views from adjacent parcels surrounding lands and public ways. Then it goes on to talk about landscaping. CCPB suggests that the site landscape plan be reviewed in order to evaluate the proposed screening. And to determine if a necessary degree of screening will be achieved. It's also suggested that the applicant provide assurances that the remaining existing vegetation and all proposed landscaping will be maintained and replaced as necessary. For the lifetime of the project, suggested that the applicant provide details on any landscaping bond. Decommissioning, CCPB notes that the applicant provided a decommissioning plan. This plan incorporates guidance from Nice Dam, okay, construction complete. Town of Ancrum zoning law sets forth provisions which include the following, performance bond, any security that may be accepted by a municipality. To ensure that improvements required as part of an application for development will be satisfactorily completed. Such security may also be required as part of a reclamation or restoration plan to ensure that any decommissioning. Such security may also be required as part of a reclamation or restoration plan to ensure that any decommissioning plan is fully implemented. The board notes that the submission includes a decommissioning plan with cost summary for review or removal of the solar energy system and restoration of the site. It is unclear if the applicant will be required as a condition to the approval of a site plan to post any type of security or performance guarantee to ensure that construction is completed with the approved timeframe. Farmland soils. CCP notes that this site contains highly productive farmland soils. CCPB anticipates that best management practices during all phase of the project including construction, operation, and decommissioning will be implemented in order to minimize impact to the site and quality of the soils. Adherence to the guidelines for solar energy projects. Construction mitigation for ag land is recommended. Ag land CCP notes that this proposed development will be built on vacant land with prime agricultural soils. This array will not be constructed as a farm-related solar system. The energy generator will serve off-site uses and may result in the permanent loss of prime farmland. Maintenance. The transition of the site from open ag space ag spa, open space ag use and to a solely energy solar energy system may result in a significant change in the character of this neighborhood. An operation and maintenance plan is crucial and should adjust regular scheduled upkeep of the site, including access drives, equipment, landscaping, vegetation, and mowing the area beneath the array. Suggested that the frequency of site maintenance be considered and that regular upkeep be required for the duration of the useful life of the solar energy system through completion of decommissioning. Suggested that the applicant provide details of the proposed maintenance schedule. And the recommendation is approval contingent on the applicant playing with all unnecessary reviews and approvals from Town of Ancrum State and Fed and National Grid. That's it. It's a lot, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a lot.
A lot of it was covered.
Yeah.
Um. All right, so we'll forward it to our planner and our engineer.
Yeah.
Okay, the public hearing.
Yeah.
Is still open. Okay.
I would. Would it be possible, unless the the public hearing being closed doesn't necessitate that the planning board needs to make any form of a decision, but since there have been no new substantial comments received beyond what had been already addressed, unless there are and we're aware of them. That that is.
Gonna take some comments now.
Okay.
Um, if I if I close the public hearing, then the clock has been started, so. Um, you've asked for us to send this to our consultants, so we'll be back here next month.
Right, right, definitely.
I just as soon start the clock when we're done.
Sure, we.
We we haven't made a determination on the AF yet, so.
Correct.
All right. Couple of questions. Yeah.
Yeah, fire new. As far as maybe back we on the chairman of fire district. So if you build it to New York State code, which I didn't hear any of that, what's the total length of the road?
It's over three thousand feet.
So if you go to New York State Fire Code, you need pull offs every thousand feet.
Every five.
Every five hundred.
And and the road needs to be twenty.
Yeah, so I didn't know if they were in.
Yeah, that's in there. That then the county and the county.
Okay.
Pointed that out also.
The other thing was if these are all in our array like this and we have a problem on the far end, there's room to get a vehicle through there through all those roads. Solar panels.
So the the access road is twenty feet in width. Um, throughout.
If you want to see the map, you can come here and see the map.
So.
I I'm fine.
I I think that addresses the concern around the the pull offs every five hundred feet.
Right.
Um, regarding access between the arrays. Uh, there is uh room for vehicular access in between the arrays in the event of emergency. Um, I also don't have the distance off the top of my head, but um, from one side of the array to the other uh should be navigable by by foot um or uh, you know.
Yeah.
Paramedics needed to get a stretcher. They're not trekking a mile through the array.
Well, just if there is an emergency on the far end.
Yep, yep, and.
Anybody can get to it.
Yeah, so the the access road does uh kind of traverse through the majority of.
Sex final raise.
Yep, yeah, and there is room in between the arrays uh.
For traveling. Okay. Thank you.
Hello, Jeff Baker. I'm the owner of Hill Rock Farm and Distillery, which come across the way from you on Pools Hill Road. I think couple of questions. What I mean, when we're all in support of the overall concept of sustainable energy, but this is farmland in an ag district. Um. Question in terms of, I believe you said there's no public uh view of this except on eighty two, which is not correct. There are several locations on Skyline and Cotton Tail, which is quite visible. Um, also, you've chosen to put it quite high up on the slope. And my question would be, when you have ten acres of glass and you have glare, that's that I would I would imagine could impact miles of view corridor to the southwest. So I'd love to know if you've done any glare analysis.
Sure, that's a great question. Um, as far as uh I think we've we've probably touched on this a couple of times, but the selection of the the viewpoints for the visual impact analysis is selected by our consultants based off where they think, given topography, vegetation, uh proximity to site, they're most likely to see it. Uh, I'm unaware of the the exact locations that you were speaking of. Do you have like an approximate distance and direction from the site? Uh.
Certainly within.
So.
I can see. And those are similar. So what I'm what I'm saying is the only location we have is making two where it cut off the road. Is there many other places high line or bridge line? Where it is compatible. So the question is really have you rest at? Is there is there strong evidence that there won't be a major layer of that? I don't know those people.
Sure, and to answer your question, so the technology that's used in all modern uh PV modules and the ones that we're utilizing. It's an anti-reflective coating, which promotes less than three percent of refraction of light, so that's less than three percent reflective, which is uh approximately six to eight percent less than a typical residential house. So when you're looking at these or a house nearby that you potentially could see, the house uh will technically be giving off a higher glare rate than the modules themselves. Now, on top of that, the racking that we're using is a tracking system. So the tracker's intent is to stay as perpendicular as possible to the sun at all times, which eliminates uh those potentials for glare where there's a lower radiance angle. Um, there have been countless glares, study analysis done with different softwares on tracking systems where they did not note any notable glare um beyond like uh um not a harmful threshold, but a like an obtrusive threshold. Um, we did not perform one specifically for this site. Um, but it was not a requirement. Uh, if the planning board feels that that would be beneficial to further analyze it. Uh, we would be open to exploring that, but um, as far as also the the distance from the site. We, I think, look at a mile radius in a straight line typically for the view shed analysis. Uh, if there are points beyond that, it um you know. Again, we we left it to the planning board to see if there were any other additional vantage points that were uh looking to be explored.
Yes, go ahead.
This land is going to be resolved. First of first of all, what is it?
Ah, no, yes. Uh, my name is Tina Aiken. I had a question. The land is basically lost for agriculture use. Um. And could there be like something beneficial? For example, could we instead of having a lawn underneath, could the panels, could we have like a create a wildlife habitat for like insects and help our wild songbirds that are decreasing so badly, like plant instead of a lawn? More like native herbs and flowers? And not more that often, maybe twice a year, just to prevent it from growing up. And then we could have like a create like a habitat, you know? And get something positive out of the whole thing, possibly.
That's actually a great question and something that we've considered. So within our within our plans, it's specified, and I know it's not like the lightest, maybe most fun read, so I I would imagine most folks haven't taken their free time to dive into them, but we're proposing a pollinator-friendly seed mix. So within the array area, uh, we we do uh expect that a pollinator-friendly mixed is gonna uh plant and grow. During that time, uh, we have specified in the O and N maintenance plan uh that the mowing will occur once it gets near the module uh height, so that will kind of not continuously uh cut the grass and will allow for uh pollinators to habitate the site. Uh, and that's especially important this year. I know there's like a huge loss in the bee population actually within New York, so uh that was mindfully selected when we picked that uh seed mix.
Does that answer the question?
Yes.
Anyone else?
On the plan, um, near the bottom, the lower the lower uh field, there's a proposed.
For the I mean, for trees in shade, thousands and paper and that out.
Uh, I don't believe there's any proposed or removed vegetation uh to the south of the site. That.
Is it screen? Do you hear?
There's a dark area that says trees to be removed.
It's good class. You have to slip.
Yeah.
Sorry, you go up here. Is this the screen?
Very small.
On the bottom there. Okay. Put the little one here. Yeah. Yeah, we set up for this lines and pull that out. It's showing on that. Uh, we feel the map. So. Uh, what was the real cause of that? Susan, who's this from? Um. Your gas paying?
Don't put the papers out on it. What map is that?
Yeah.
Where the trees are being removed.
The only place I saw removal of trees was C one oh two.
C one oh two.
There's a black area that indicates small amount of trees to be removed, so the road will be continuous.
I like. Wasn't that clear? Tree clearing limits approximately zero point two acres.
Are these new trees? Those true. Our house for the field.
Excuse me, so. Because always you have to take out some trees here. But that's the same right now. That's what you're pointing.
There's a lower field.
Are you talking new trees?
Well, it's just my fault, so I didn't know what that meant.
That's planting.
Those, no, proposed tree line could be new vegetation, or it could mean that minor trimming is needed for the roadway. That is the only place where we're proposing removal of trees. And.
They're saying proposed trees. So it's either proposed removal or proposed trees.
This says.
Yeah, we both.
I don't. This is proposed trees. And then there are yeah, so that and then these are the ones that are be putting are going in way back by the.
Property line.
So that's that's all. That's that's all by the, I'm saying.
Yeah, okay.
That's all the new trees here. Otherwise, there's some trees way out. Nope, there's nothing going on.
On the version that we have. I might miss.
Yeah, without the sheet number, I'm not exactly sure.
So I mean, part of mine is really all forty with three nine. The only the only tree clearing that we are proposing is along we have a road.
The only tree clearing that we are proposing is along the roadway um to enter the array area. The other remaining existing vegetation on site is uh intended to be left.
You're trying to see those shapes.
Yeah, that and that's accounted for uh in our analysis. Um, so we we do. We do understand the impacts of that.
Okay, so is that the end? The end of the questions for this evening?
I asked.
You have anybody on Zoom?
Yeah, we're.
Okay. Okay.
I'm Una.
Are you? Did you recognize Julie? I'm not sure. I can hardly hear you all. Am I?
Yeah, you can hear him.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah. I'm Julie. I live on Roche Drive. I um may have missed this, so I apologize in advance if I'm asking a question that you all have addressed already. Uh, just FYI. People on Zoom can only hear about half of what you're saying. If anyone isn't speaking with a microphone, it's completely garbled, so I wanted to let you know about that. Um.
Does that mean you're volunteering for the Technology Committee would be?
No, I'm not, but it's just, it's real simple. I mean, you all been doing Zoom for six years now. I'm I'm sure you can figure it out by now, but you need a mic to speak in.
You can email the Technology Committee, Julie, if you want.
Okay, alright. I'm just telling you guys because you're there. Anyway, that's not my point. My point is that um uh, there were quite a few comments on that last bit that was uh discussed. Someone had written a letter. I don't know who it was, but it was approved pending uh a addressing all of these comments about landscaping and um so on and so forth. So um I I'm just curious about how and when those items that are listed get addressed, you know? It seemed like that was um, you know, you you read all the comments, but I don't I don't have no idea how those things get addressed and and when. So I I have. That's my question.
That was the letter from the county recommending approval.
That's right. Approval approval based on how addressing those those comments.
Comments.
No, no.
It's suggestions.
Suggestions.
Not a proposal based on it.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, that letter hadn't made it to the applicant yet.
And a lot of that's already been addressed.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to know. A lot of it's been addressed and you'll be addressing the rest of it before approve uh before this goes through, or how does that work? I'm uh again, um, I'm kind of new at this, so I don't know how you operate.
Yes, we'll we'll have the applicant address them or let us know how they're going to address them. We'll get you the letter, so.
Thank you.
Max.
Boy.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi. How is everyone? My name is Lawrence Goldberg. I am the next door neighbor. I live uh adjacent to the proposed. My name is Lawrence Goldberg. I am the next door neighbor. I live, uh, adjacent to the proposed project. Uh, I'm sorry I come to these meetings a little late, but I think my notice in the mail got screwed around and I came late. I, the first one thing that I heard tonight, there are two or three comments. One, I don't drive by at fifty five miles an hour on Route eighty two. My house is on Route eighty two, so I turn around and I'm there. Uh, secondly, I heard that there was a nine point four acre. Area of disturbance. I would like to know how that impacts my home and all the other adjacent properties. Because it seems like a fair amount of distance for all of us. I also. Have a question about the impacts because I have, I have been advised that this is now part of an LLC. When it used to be part of the major company, and I am concerned whether there is enough money there if there's in. Impacts to pay for the impacts and damages that it may cause. I guess, uh. I'd like to know how that will happen and what they're planning, if any, in mitigation of these impacts. Uh, and also I recall I came out in a very, very rainy day to have a visit and there were many cars there. And we were told that the visit was canceled and that there would be another day, but none of, but I didn't get another. Chance to a visit and none of us got to actually see the project. I know the board did. And I trust the board very much, but I have my own, uh, issues with it and I have my own issues with the impacts on me. And the other neighbors as a next door neighbor.
All right, let's go backwards. Are you, are those all your questions?
No, I have more, but this is for the time being. You'll hate me if I give more.
Right. Yes, we initially set up a sidewalk with the neighbors invited. It was a very rainy day. It was a Saturday. It was po, it was called off. When we went to reschedule it. And this is an option of the owner, not the board's determination. The owner decided he only wanted to permit, which is in the code, the planning board members to do the sidewalk. So. We had to exclude any of the, uh, residents. So unfortunately, that was their determination. We had no control over that. So. That's what happened. I described that at the last meeting, but that's the long and the short of it. So as far as disturbance, yes, there's almost ten acres of disturbance, but that means they, they, the soil gets disturbed, the. Whatever landscaping farm field, but it's then replaced with plantings and it's stabilized. So. The disturbance is an area we measure. For the, for the construction process, but it's then reclaimed and put back to either the same condition or a better condition. So. As far as the comments, if you may, and asked about the. Uh, you didn't, you're not the one that asked about the letter from the county, but those, those items will be addressed. You had one other point that I.
Decommissioning the bond.
There's a bond for decommissioning this, which they have to keep active. So, um, it's been.
Not just decommissioning, is there a bond for damages in case the other, the neighbors are damaged because now it's an LLC. Which has much less assets than the major company.
No, there's no such bond. It's not required in our code and we can't predict what may occur. And I expected a. I don't know what you mean by damages, so.
I don't know what I mean either, but I, I know that there's always a potential for damage. I want to be respectful. But I do, I do know what you're saying and, uh, I don't know what damages an array can cause because I'm not. That's familiar with arrays, but I know that the town should be cognizant that they, that, that some of the residents may be impacted.
Well, we're following the code. This, the solar farm use was added to the zoning code. A while back and we're, we are following it hopefully to the letter of the law. And that's what our job is and we're going to do it as balanced and fairly as possible. So that's all I can say.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else want to finish Zoom? Can I finish Zoom, please?
Hi there.
Hello.
Okay, um, I have a, I, I sent a statement in writing to, uh, Monica Cleveland, but I can read it right now.
Well, you sent it to the wrong spot. Just be aware, it should go to the planning board.
Okay, yeah, I, I had no other, uh. You know, ready email that it.
To the planning board, but I have not seen it.
Okay, well, I will, uh, read it in. I wish to point out that over and above the obvious aesthetic and environmental concerns and the potential damage to scenic rural property values. Solar farm economics is based entirely on government subsidy. Solar farming is not a viable concern. It is primarily a tax racket, corporate welfare. Once government tax and other subsidies cut off, as it will inevitably will be. Solar farms are likely to go bankrupt. In that event, the town would be stuck with the enormous liability of removing and disposing of panels. That are full of chemicals and that have no reclamation value. The cost of wind and solar energy is from between two point five to four times greater than that from other sources. Solar and wind also does not provide the base load power that is necessary to power a grid. Recently, heavy dependence on wind and solar in Spain caused a massive regional blackout. Because this type of power is of unstable frequency on the grid. And that is, uh, quoted from, or that is, uh, cited from Bjorn Lomborg in the Wall Street Journal. A little while ago. Solar panels and their inverters are also almost exclusively Chinese sourced. This poses a national security risk. It has been widely reported that the inverters have remotely operated kill switches. That can potentially damage the U S electrical grid. It would be difficult for a small town to police solar equipment sourcing, inspect for optimal synthetic inertia. Or advanced inverter technologies. Or require whatever is the latest in grid protection, much less enforce remediation on solar firm non-compliance. Solar is great for individual homes to serve a household's own needs via battery storage. This type of off-grid use is the best and most sustainable use for solar. But solar is expensive. It can never compete on the grid with power from other known sources. The whole solar farming concept is ill conceived. Quite frankly, it is corrupt because it is entirely dependent on government subsidy and tax.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Tax privileges. Excuse me, I have to finish.
You have anything specific to say? What you're saying is a conspiracy theory in my opinion.
It is not, it is not. It is.
Nothing. Disapprove. Shut her off, please. Please. Uh, that, that, what she's saying has no validity in the code that we're dealing with. We can't. Can't evaluate what she's saying. Can we evaluate what she's saying?
It's a public comment, I think.
Let her finish. Let her finish.
Ma'am, you are on mute and we can't hear you currently. If you could please unmute.
Can you unmute her or no?
Can you unmute your computer?
How dare you really?
Because I don't get what you're saying as part of what we're doing to approve or disapprove this project. I'm sorry.
You don't get it. Well, you know, I'm muted, so whatever.
But finish your statement so we can move on, please.
Oh, all right. Well, thank you. I did, I thought that I was muted. All right. The whole solar farming concept is ill conceived and quite frankly, I consider it corrupt because it is entirely dependent for, uh, viability on government subsidy and tax privilege. It's a tool for business entities to be formed to take money from regional electric utilities to then turn around and raise electricity rates. To pay for any additional cost burdens put on them by these ISOs. It's reasonably argued by many that the climate crisis is concocted or highly speculative at the very least and are not based on good science. If they are right and they well may be, then all of this manufactured deference that has been given to green energy in recent years. Is a waste and emotional manipulation. Anyway, the political winds are turning on this issue. So the likelihood of bankrupt unfunded solar farms burdening rural towns with toxic litter is rising. Thank you.
All I can tell you is we will have a bond in place. Prior to them starting construction for the removal of this system should something go wrong. So that's our protection and if it has to be utilized, it will be utilized. So.
One thing from Rob.
Uh, there's definitely a, a lot in that message. Uh, regarding the financials, um, I would say it's not necessarily. I, I will go into it, but not necessarily the planning board's responsibility to assess the feasibility. Or viability of a project, nor, nor the public's. And that is why the decommissioning bond is in place. If there were an event that the. Business could not produce money, which it will as it sells electricity, then. The town would have access to the decommissioning bond, which escalates in time with an inflation rate so that they will always have the cost. To fully remove the site. So just to provide some coverage there. Regarding the economics of solar, I, I don't want people to come out of this misinformed. Solar power right now is the fastest and cheapest deployable energy source in the U S. If you don't believe that, I encourage you, please do unbiased research. Chevron, Exxon, everyone is jumping into that. Because there is no faster way to create reliable energy right now. Um, so I have full stock in the project and the technology. Regarding the toxicity, I think we went into a pretty good detail on the past couple, uh, public meetings. The technology we're using is glass. Uh, food grade plastic that is in mouth guards and crocs. And silicon, which is the second most earth abundant, uh, element in the world. So these are, these are common, common, um. You know, materials that are being used in our, in our project. Um, thin cell modules, which were associated with lead and cadmium were phased out like over ten years ago. And we are not proposing to use those on site. I don't think any new projects are, but I can only speak for our own. Um, I'm not sure if I missed anything else that was necessarily covered there.
The inverters?
Yes, so there has been some news. I would say a lot of our equipment does come out of. Uh, China, India, it's mostly imported. There is a push and we're hoping that there is domestic content that we can rely on if manufacturing takes off. Um, we will definitely lean towards those materials. Until then, we're left with what we have. There's new safeguards actively going into place. Um, I can't speak to, uh. Why necessarily people were putting in, uh, these unknown mechanisms and inverters, et cetera, but it is being handled. At the top level, um, both by the government and manufacturers at this point. So. Um, there should be some, I hope, level of surety around that. And it's something obviously we are aware of and will be. Committing to as we purchase, uh, equipment.
Say that again.
Is it the town's consultants that are coming up with the bond amount? Cause I would assume someone has to determine that that's.
The applicant came up with the bond amount. Our engineer reviewed it. He said, he thinks it's in line with what he's seen in the past.
Yeah, I just obviously wanted to be adequate to remove these and.
And there is.
Okay.
And there was one other question.
And there is the ability to, within the decommissioning, to revisit costs if there's drastic changes in market variability and. Um, labor costs, so that way the town can adjust those values as well.
Okay, ma'am, you had a question or? Was answered and there was.
All right, excellent. Uh, hi, I'm Derek Porter. I live on Roche Drive. Um, I've got a couple of questions. At first I just want to offer a comment. Um, to the developers, you're in a room of. Members in the community who obviously care about this place a lot. Um, your meeting code, we assume with your project. And there are base requirements that the planning board has for you to do. You have an opportunity, however, to reach out to the community and make a connection in a different capacity. We've had developers come in to propose various different projects to our community in the past. And it has been met with confrontation and a lot of problems. So with your best interest in mind. I would recommend to you to reach out to the community, reach out to some of the neighbors who have expressed concern. And to get to know them, get to know their concerns and see if you can address those matters more directly. Beyond or as an extension to what you're doing at the planning board. So that's the first thing. I would also say that my wife and I have fifty three solar panels on our property. We believe in solar. It's a good thing. But there are some questions, however, with your project that I would like to understand myself and hear you address the developers, but also to hear what the planning board. Has in response to that. Um, so one being the definition of a view shed. Um, we've, this has been brought up a couple of times today. Um, there have been reference from public roadways and eighty two specifically, but there are other public roadways around. People have expressed concern about that. Um, so I would encourage you not to simply look at only. The planning board's requirements, but to think about the neighbors in the community and how your project may impact them. So what are the other public roadways that you should be looking at? Regardless of distance, we're talking about a ten acre glass surface. That is very active and disparate from the farmland around us. So it's going to stand out. Assuming that you are taking the precautions that you've said, which is awesome. But you may need to expand that a little bit. So give some thought to that. And I would encourage you to drive the roads if you haven't. Any point that you can see from the proposed solar site, you should be looking at where those roads are. You should drive to those roads. And look at the site from there and then give consideration to shielding from that vantage point. That may expand beyond the code requirements, but I'm suggesting to you for your benefit that you consider the neighborly factors with this. I would also encourage you to talk to all of the neighbors. That own property that are in visible distance of the proposed site and get their feedback. This forum is one place to do that, but go talk to them at their properties. Look at. Your proposal from their site and hear their perspectives. So especially if the, the owner of the property has shielded the public from going to the site, you then. Have to even extend yourself more. To get their buy-in, get their support and to understand their perspective. So they don't feel like they're being cut out of the process. Again, I offer this as a benefit to you. So I would encourage you to do that. Um, and then also there relative to the visible shielding, this is the final comment I would make, actually a question for the planning board. I don't know what kinds of requirements are in the comp plan or other factors that the developer has to consider. But the individuals that live adjacent to the property have real life matters that are tangible. To their property value and their enjoyment of this place that we love. So considering shielding requirements of private property in addition to public viewpoints should be something to consider. should be something to consider. And I would encourage the developers to willingly accept that with the objective of gaining community support. That's all. Thank you.
I would first say I definitely um, hear what you're saying and appreciate all the, the comments and suggestions. Um, and I truthfully understand as a resident of Kopeck, I'm, I'm right next door to you folks. Um, I see some of these projects that are going in. I understand some of them are not as well cited as others. I understand some developers opt to try and lean on the code as leverage to bolt bulldoze through. Um, trying to meet some of the concerns of, of neighboring property owners. Um, we did meet with the one property owner immediately adjacent to the site. Uh, the Tashes, I apologize if I mispronounced your last name. Um, to, to uh, go over some of the screening that would benefit uh, them from, from their residents. Um, if, if there are other folks that are interested or have uh, reasonable requests, again, as, as this gentleman had mentioned, uh, the public uh, comment portion of the planning board review is a great forum, but there's anything that you would like to discuss with us directly. Um, we can always uh, meet and try and talk through some of your concerns, address your questions. Um, and, and make sure that we're trying to put together the best possible project that we can.
So I, I'm, I just might recommend if you, if you, you're the adjacent neighbor.
Yeah.
So if you've had conversation, then you two could plan collectively and reach out to other people in the community to form a meeting and have a collective conversation. So if you can proactively take charge of that, then it's going to aid your mission. And then as a local community member, you can help make those introductions possibly.
Yep. And I mean, a- as I mentioned, um, we, we do have obviously the requirements that are set forth before the zoning code. We, we did opt to go kind of a little bit be uh, above and beyond what is the requirement there and put in some supplemental screening. So I will say like your, your comments and concerns are not falling on deaf ears. Uh, we, we really do want to try and be as good of neighbors here and find a compromise or a middle ground. Um, so.
Okay. We gotta move on. I don't want this.
We have two more comments.
Oh, do you zoom first?
No.
I'm related to that guy. Um, I just want to say that um, the notion of public view shed also um, can be experienced not in a car. Um, as a resident of Roche Drive, I see cars parked on the corner of eighty-two and Roche almost daily. People walk the road, they walk down eighty-two, they walk on footpaths, they walk on horse trails. They walk on cross-country ski trails or ski on cross-country ski trails. So public view shed is not only about car access. Um, and then I would like the planning board to think about the points in the seeker that use language like culture and landmark. Because this project is adjacent to one of the oldest farms in New York state that celebrated two hundred and fifty years last year. So I think the cultural landmark condition is a factor in this situation.
Okay. Next. This is the last comment for tonight. I'm going to keep the public hearing open until next meeting. If anything new comes up.
Uh, quick question. Is any part of the project dependent on government subsidies?
Um, as it is planned, right now we are expected to receive incentives. Um, but we've accounted for uh, those not coming through.
Those are federal or state?
Uh, those, those are at both levels.
That's it. All right. Last one. We don't want to want to leave anybody out.
Uh, I, given, given some of the conversation, I would appreciate that the uh, the project get in touch with each of the neighbors, including myself. And so they could meet with us and explain what they think the impacts will be on the various property, on the various people personally.
The notices were sent out. I don't know if you're an adjacent neighbor.
I am an adjacent neighbor and, and I, it took a long time. My notice got lost in the mail, but I did get in time to get that rainstorm. Uh, and, and try to catch up a little, but I would like the opportunity to have a meeting and so see what their impact is suggested for my own property because I'm there. I'm on Route eighty-two.
No, he he said that people could be.
Yeah, Lawrence, why don't you reach out? Why don't you reach out to them? It's hard, it's hard for them to know who wants to be reached out to. Now that it's publicly noticed, it might be easier for you to reach that way and, and through that gentleman's suggestion about making a, the people that have already been contacted, maybe starting a larger, a larger sort of circle of people. So there's a, a point of contact already.
If we could, if somebody from this board might send.
Oops.
Doesn't. If that went out on Ankrum mail, I would contact them.
Uh, can you say that again? We missed your last comment. The, the audio cut out.
I'm sorry. If somebody would, would send me an email with their phone number and the, and the name of the person, I would be direct, in direct contact with them.
Okay.
Well, we could take the mailing list.
Yeah.
And I don't know how we.
That's what he. Yeah.
What's all I have to do? Is the contact. And those are the people within the mailing, the required radius.
I think though it's also important.
It's possible somebody could be a neighbor and not be within the mailing radius.
No, no, no. Just on the, on our larger Ankrum email or big Ankrum email that goes out to everybody because the town, you know.
Yes, yes.
So then any, anybody that gets that, Lawrence, are you on the email list, the Ankrum email list?
I am on the Ankrum email list. I'm very lucky.
I think it'll be important though, as these conversations happen, that the planning board has some transparency or knowledge as to what areas are being discussed. And the reason I say that is not because the public's comments are, are legitimate and of concern and we want to make sure they're addressed. Ultimately, it is the planning board that is reviewing the application, issuing, assessing for environmental impacts, reviewing for code compliance, et cetera, and potentially issuing uh, approvals. So what we have to address is what the planning board needs from us.
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're, we're just suggesting to follow that gentleman's good advice of getting in touch with the neighbors. This has nothing to do with our review of this.
Yeah, I, I think the planning board will review it anyway, but I could give a much more knowledgeable comment after I've had a discussion with you.
Absolutely. And also the planning board has, uh, I believe all of the hard copies should be accessible to the public here. And also I think you folks have it online as well.
I've read them all.
Those materials are gonna, are publicly accessible for, for review. Um, I don't, I want to make sure that that's, that's known information as well.
That's correct.
We, we have to come up with some rules. I had to handle this. It can't become a free rule. So the planning board will have to be involved at some level so that I don't know, I don't know how we.
That's between them and the neighbors is just sort of friendly neighborhood stuff. I don't think that involves us at all.
I think it's more of a situation of where we are looking at it from a code standpoint and our comprehensive plan standpoint. But we're also representing the community at large as the board. And so if the community at large is feeling heard and acknowledged and having their needs met, that's what we're.
So we're keeping the meeting open and.
Correspondence. And you said that you got received quite a lot of correspondence. But nothing has been added to the drop off. Where initially you weren't at, you were putting things into the drop off. But um, like no, new correspondence, nothing has been added to that. And quite a while.
Uh, we have stuff in the Dropbox. That's, that's less than a week. That's a week old. There's two new letters in the Dropbox.
And I have here at the last meeting, we're never had it. Um, the petition so people could see that and read the signatures. Um, people who is, you know, who wants to get involved in this, you know, I, I just think that um, not a lot of stuff has been added to the drop off. The last time I looked. Um, and also there, I realized that this tax issue is something for just a town board. But they seem to be, even the supervisor didn't even say for this meeting. I think that they should be more involved. And I think that um, that's something that needs to be addressed. Um.
So two things on that. Sarah is the one that manages our Dropbox, et cetera, and she is not here today due to family things. And so she is not able to speak to that. She's very good at her job. She is incredibly punctual and um, detail oriented. So I think maybe perhaps just giving some time there so that she has.
Unfortunately, you don't know she's taking them onto the lead of that.
I was very unaware of that. So we have our sidekick stepping in.
Tonight was supposed to be your last meeting and something else came up. So we're.
So Sarah's out. So um, unfortunately, I don't think any of us are as prepared to speak to that exact thing. We do do our due diligence to add in all correspondence. We are not in any way trying to hinder public access to knowledge. So I guarantee you that if something is missing, we will look into it and make sure that is rectified.
Emily, we have um, in the meeting minutes uh, that you submitted the petition and it is said here that um, uh, the letter and the petition will be added to the record.
It is in the file.
So just saying that it's, it's in the meeting minutes and Joe says it's in the file.
And I did speak with, I did speak with. I did speak with Sarah this afternoon. Again, I'm, I'm here on a, on a temporary basis. Um, but she is, she did mention that she has some additional work that she wants to do and she will be checking emails, especially in the next couple of days. So we will make sure that if there is correspondence that is not on the Dropbox or was presented to the board at the last meeting, we'll make sure that it does get shared.
This was a new thing that just came up as emergencies tend to be.
Uh, yes, my understanding is that she will be checking and forwarding also to make sure that nothing gets lost.
So. Is that one of their documents? Yeah, I'm trying. Trying. Robert, is that one of your maps? What, what are we looking at?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, all right. That's uh, can I get it a?
You can make a motion that we extend the public hearing uh, on the solar project to the next month.
Second.
Well, in favor.
Aye.
All right. That's it on that for tonight.
From our standpoint, are there uh, any besides clarification on that? Or do we want to follow up afterwards? Uh, to discuss deliverables the next meeting?
Yeah, well, the um, check to see that, we'll get you the county letter and check to see that anything in the county has been addressed and point out where it's been addressed, if not addressed.
Okay.
I think, I think that's what we're down to because the engineering planning comments were dead.
All right. We will aim to uh, provide response comments on those county.
Go ahead. Just keep us or keep me in the loop of what you're going to do with the neighbors. So we know what's, at least know what's going on.
Sure, sure. Um, contact information is included in the application. I could also send that to the planning board again to circulate with favors or uh, what have you, however they would like to reach out.
Okay, okay. Very good. See you next month. Thank you. Ain't gonna get any easier, guys. No.
It's not getting any easier.
Where's my agenda?
My Sam, I should have been like two bites while we wait.
Yeah, let everybody.
But it's not a, it's not a, I'll have to carry the next one. Yeah, no.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is Homeland Towers, special use permit, site plan. And good evening. Yeah.
Sure.
Grab on. Thank you, Brian.
No problem. Uh, again, for the record, my name is David Kenny, attorney with Snyder and Snyder. I'm here tonight to represent the applicants, Homeland Towers and Verizon Wireless. Um, since our last meeting uh, on May seventh, uh, we did have the visual resource assessment prepared and finalized and submitted to the board. We also uh, reviewed the town planners' comments and the town engineers' comments and tried to address all of those comments. I put a comment letter to get, or a response letter together that went through each comment with an exact response. And then we included some additional application materials um, to demonstrate our responses. Um, I believe uh, the board is in the position to deem the application complete and schedule us for a public hearing. Um, other than that, I'm here tonight to answer any questions the board may have.
Well, I thought we'd see a presentation.
You at the last meeting who had discussed that uh, the presentation should be done at the public hearing. Um, so that was our understanding is that you wanted to wait for the public hearing to do the presentation for the public. Uh, but we can, we're absolutely prepared to do that.
Okay. Um. Well, we're in a position to schedule the public hearing. Um, the
Yeah, we're at that compare.
The, we, we declared our intent to be lead agency, but thirty days haven't passed.
Right. We're on the twenty-ninth day, I think, right?
Yeah, something like that. So.
That's, that's okay. I, I understand that the public hearing, you can take an action at that time to uh, officially declare yourselves as lead agency.
Lead, lead agency. Yeah. We'd like to get through the, through the visual presentation. Um, obviously declare ourselves lead agency and then we'd like to do the environmental, the EAF because you need to go to the zoning board.
Absolutely. And, and just so the board is aware, I did speak with Sarah earlier today. Our plan is to make sure that we file the application with the zoning board by the July fifteenth deadline so that we can appear at the July twenty-eighth zoning board meeting. Again, that's no pressure on this board to make a secret determination of that. Again, that's no pressure on this board to make a secret determination at that first meeting in July. I just wanted you to be aware that we are going to the zoning board. We just wanted to make sure that the application was deemed complete first, so we have a complete application to file with the zoning board.
Right, and. I assume we're on the same page that we have to make a secret determination before the zoning board could.
Correct, that's how secret works. If you'll be the lead agency, then the lead agency needs to make a secret action before any other board.
Right, so we may not have that.
Exactly, that's why I'm saying is even though we're gonna be at the July, hopefully be at the July ZBA meeting. I'm not saying that that requires the board to take any action on seeker at the July meeting for the planning board. Just wanted to let you know that we are going to the zoning board and we're getting in front of them.
Yeah, no, that's fine. You can start the process with them, but.
But yes, they can't make a decision on anything until this board.
Towards us.
It was just a suggestion of Nan. She wanted to make sure that we got into the zoning board as fast as possible, so that.
Okay, yeah.
They're just aware, okay.
I don't have a problem. As fast as we get this going and.
No, so this board um. So you have to do a designation of lead agency, and so you it takes thirty days to run out before any other of the involved agencies. Maybe they wanted to be the lead agency, so you have to run those thirty days out. Um we did it at the May seventh meeting, so this being June fifth, where I think we're on the twenty ninth. Day of that, so technically we need to wait one more day before this board can designate itself as lead agency. And then you need to review, just like you did with Ancom Solar, the part two of the EAF to confirm. Whatever we've done with our part one was satisfied and categorized into small, moderate bar or no impacts.
Yeah, mine. I I think we were waiting for DEC. See if they're gonna respond. Yes. Yes, but I want to see the.
But that's if we've.
Want to open the public hearing, I want to see the visual presentation.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely, so our plan is is Saratoga Associates was the uh vendor that prepared the visual resource assessment report. We're gonna have them actually come and appear at the meeting to uh present on the visual resource assessment and go through the whole. You know, how the balloon test was conducted on the day and answer any questions from the board of public that may come up on that day.
Okay, so. All that being said.
Very confused about the dates and what's happening, but what what is the fact at this point because. My understanding with the planning board was. You need to first go to review everything, then it was gonna go to the zoning board. And so. What's happened, what what are you guys still in charge?
Yes.
Yeah, nothing is changing that.
We're waiting for. The thirty day timeframe to pass for us to officially declare ourselves lead agency. So we can't do what we did with the cell with the solar. Application and go through sequel item by item. We use complicated applications, and I just don't want to make a generic statement. It's a negative or positive deck or whatever, so we can't do that until the thirty days pass. Unfortunately, they were at the second meeting in May, and they coming up short in the timeframe. We're gonna schedule a public hearing, just so you know, fifteen hundred foot radius.
I completely understand this. Par for the course with cell towers.
Hoping it's all farmed, so it's not a lot of. Little lots, but um. So we're gonna. Send out the mailings and notice to to start the public hearing. And um we are still the lead agency, but. You have to understand, this is what we call a special use permit. And it basically says. That a hundred foot cell tower is permitted in this district as long as you comply with all the requirements of the special use. They're asking for an additional fifty feet. We can't approve that. It has to go to the zoning board for them to say yea or nay, so. That's that's their decision. If they say yes, then it comes back for us to finish the site plan and special use permit process. If they deny it, they could go away forever, or they could come back with an amended application. That's their choice. So um.
That that is correct, so the zoning board is still uh or the planning board is still the lead agency in in control of the main approvals for the project. There is one component, as the chairman stated, the height of the tower is also the height of the towers related to a front yard setback. So there's two area variances with the way the tower is currently proposed. That need to be approved before this board could actually approve the special permit in the site plan, so. The order of operations would be this board has to take a secret action first. Um then the zoning board would be able to take their actions on the application. And then this board would be able to take its actions on special permit and site plan approval, so it's. It's coordinated review, but this board will be the lead agency.
Does that explain it a little better?
Yeah, I think so.
Just hang in there, it's it's complicated. In the July meeting.
With July seven is what I heard.
Is that is that the first month, Thursday of the month?
I think it's July tenth. Cause July third is the Thursday, which was the first Thursday of the month, but I believe Sarah had stated on the calendar. Because July fourth is the next day, the planning board meeting on the calendar is July tenth.
Okay, I didn't know that was, did anybody else know that was changed?
We did talk about it a few meetings ago when we were looking at all the meetings coming up, that that would be an issue that was a holiday meeting.
Okay, I'm fine with it. I just let's make sure that it's on the website.
Yeah, no, we had discussed that. The only other question we had also discussed was, do we want the public hearing to be during our regular scheduled meeting since we indicated being lengthy? For it, that was a question, and that's.
Yeah, I I was gonna, yeah, I mean, you could see how long first application.
Right, two hours.
So I'm sorry, what is that?
We haven't, we're still, we're just talking. We're trying to be separating it so that we are not here for four hours.
We're trying to give it the.
Attention it means.
You know what happens, is that the? We have other applications and applicants that end up getting backed up. Uh so we try to balance it out.
What they're stating is is the regular meeting is July tenth, but they're considering right now having a separate special meeting just for us so that they don't overload an agenda. And we're amenable to that. We'll appear any day you want us. If you want us on that day, I'll bring the fireworks.
Nah, it's a long weekend. Everybody's gonna be somewhere. Just wondering, should we do the second? No, I want to do just one application.
Oh, we're saying to do Thursday on the second and then our regular board meeting on the tenth.
That would be my first thought. That makes sense?
Yep. Do the public hearing on the second and then.
That gives us enough days, right? Yeah, we have enough days.
A lot of people do take that whole.
So do the sixteenth.
Yeah, but we're backing the meetings up too close to each other. That's the problem. You go to the seventeenth, then our next meeting is the seventh. Have two meetings in one week? We want to have two meetings.
What?
Yeah.
So what's the dates?
I would say one on July. July eighth for this cell tower, and then I'll let it be the one tenth.
I can't reach. Sorry, it's all.
So what's wrong with like the tenth and the seventeen?
Well, then it's close to the August. I could do the ninth and tenth. We could do a Monday and then. We spend two days in the road together.
This stuff is exhausting.
I could do that too.
I could do nine and ten.
I could do nine and ten.
Yeah, I I could make it work.
You want to find someplace to be?
I mean, it's it's.
But I could do the ninth.
You can't do.
No, I'm a wedding.
Gets married on a Thursday.
But yeah, I could do the ninth, so we could.
I could do the ninth, I could do the that one.
Unfortunately, me neither.
Two meetings in a row, ninth and death.
I'll be here for the night.
Okay, you gotta vote.
Okay.
Hey, so our hearing on July ninth and then our regular board meeting on the tenth.
Okay, so you got the special meeting on the night.
Thank you very much, we'll be there. Um should we, who should we coordinate regarding notices? Does the town handle all of the notices, or is there any on the applicant?
You know, we usually do. And in a lot of places, as you know, the applicant does notices. Let me see what we have for staffing and see what the list is. We I may ask you to do.
Sure, we're happy to help. Let us know if we need our help.
You know, this might be a hundred.
I I spoke with Sarah today. I don't know the details of it, but I am appreciative of the circumstances the town is in with the planning board clerk going on a family leave. Um so if there's anything we can do to help, please let us know.
We don't have a complete application yet.
Well, you you should have a complete application.
Yeah, but we haven't had the presentation.
Are we, sorry, just to go back before before, are we saying our public hearing on Wednesday is also gonna be at seven, or should we start it at? That we think it's gonna be like. Or seven?
I think seven. We're only gonna have the one application.
Good point.
So you submitted the latest, is that your?
Yeah, that's that's my pile right there. So thi- this is the uh the submission that has the visual resource assessment report in it, as well as um we got comments from the. Board's planner and the board's engineer. Uh we provided responses to those, and I put in the cover letter like a uh their comment and then the response directly beneath. So it's easy, so you don't have to hunt through the application.
That's why they just showed up tonight.
Yeah, they they were delivered on Monday, so I'm not sure what, you know, how they get to you.
Yeah, and then somebody took over the conference room where we leave this stuff for the. Free women's day and hit everything on us, and we go. But I guess we found. All right, so you're gonna be public hearing.
We'll be here on the ninth and we'll give you a presentation.
I I will be in touch with you if I need you to do the mailings.
Sounds great.
We'll figure out how to do the notice in the paper, but. Or if we can, I don't know where we put it, quite honestly.
Yeah, we we just did for the balloon test. We met, we had done like the four different newspapers because you wanted a larger radius, but.
I think we only do one.
Uh yeah, but whatever you guys normally do, if you just need our assistance, happy to assist.
I'll find out.
Okay.
I'll get back to you early next week.
I think we discussed on that, both with calls and different carons and everything else that we were gonna try.
I think that was more for the balloon test, though, because it was the people would see it from different areas, but whatever the board is requiring. Uh yeah, whatever the board is requiring, we're happy to accommodate. We want the public to show up. We want to make sure that they're aware of the application.
If I can get Sarah and just give me where we put it the last time, then we'll do the second.
Okay.
And she said she was preparing the list today. I don't know if it's in there. Before she left, she was preparing the list for the mailing. I don't know where she might have put it, but. I'll find it and get it.
Sounds great. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you.
There's a woman back there.
Oh, can't see her.
You wanna come get the mic?
Yes.
Then I think the public questions, just to make sure that we understand.
Screen, so let me know if you can't hear. So uh you mentioned we're gonna get access to the final application. Will we also get access to the presentation?
Presentation, what happened?
Oh, it's not a presentation, it's a presentation, just an oral, like a verbal presentation of the application. Sorry, I meant a presentation as in I I understood there was a document that is a presentation, but you're saying.
That's from the balloon test and the visual study, everything. We have not yet seen that either. We asked them to show it during the public hearing so everyone could see it.
Can we get it before the public hearing?
Look, can you? Yes, it's it has been filed with the town, so it it should be part of the application folder. Um. So it it's been filed with the town, the application's open to the public, you should be able to have it.
Come in and view the documents. You can't take them, but you can always come in and view the documents in the planning.
Perfect.
And I'm sorry, those are the ones we were saying we just got and that we have not yet seen.
Okay.
Right.
Can you please state your name for the record? My name is Sandra Oberholenzer, for the record. Great, I'll have a look at the documents and the presentation. And you mentioned they're also going to the same place as the prior documents, so on the Dropbox.
So we're we're in Dropbox crisis right now because Sarah's on leave, so we have to figure that out. We don't know.
Did you send us an electronic?
They're not.
They're not there now, I just looked. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I emailed Sarah, but it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe.
Full, I don't know about everybody else.
Mine's getting close, but yeah. Mine's getting close as well, but but it should still be, yeah, okay. Um. So we'll probably get notified when they're up there, and then the fifteen. I heard fifteen hundred foot radius, is that the radius of? Notified, is does that include people um in the neighboring county?
It's fifteen hundred feet.
Okay.
From the corners of the property that the cell tower is going to be located.
Regardless of county, yeah, okay.
I don't.
I I guess.
I think if it crosses the line, I think we only notify the town.
Yeah, because the property. The I I think I know, I'm not sure exactly where, but the edge of the property borders Duchess County.
Right.
Right, so we probably just notify the town.
Town and the village will get a notification. It's up to them to notify their residents. We won't notify. Residents outside of Ancom.
Got it, okay, thank you. Um and is there a stop clock for this project? And it may be a silly question, but I'm just trying to understand. And when did it start?
So the the shot clock is as part of federal law, so. The Telecommunications Act, which is the federal law that oversees the siding of federal uh wireless telecommunications facilities. Um that sets a reasonable review period on municipalities to review applications for siding these. So for a new tower, it's a hundred and fifty days, so it started when we first submitted the application. Um but when we first submitted the application, we acknowledged that we didn't have the visual resource assessment as part of the application, so. We immediately told the shot clock, so we paused it, we stopped it. Um by the submission of this uh response to the the consultant comments and the submission of the visual resource assessment, the shot clock has been restarted. Um so I don't have an exact calculation, but because it was stopped almost immediately because we didn't have the visual resource assessment. We're very close to the full time length in there. That said, it is a position of the applicant. Um we will, if the application's being progressed reasonably. Um we will continue to extend the shot clock to give the board additional time to review uh and, you know, make a decision on the application. So the shot clock is something that's on the applicant as well as the board. Um because if the shot clock runs out, then the applicant is triggered a thirty day statute of limitations to file a suit. To enforce uh the Federal Telecommunications Act. So we don't want to run the court to say, hey, the board should have made a decision just for the court to say, go back to the board and make a decision. That's always a waste of time. However, the shot clock is on this board. Um so right now you still have a long time, but if we get closer to the expiration of the shot clock, we will discuss it a little bit more.
We could ask for.
Absolutely, uh but my point is, is as long as it's being reasonably progressed. We will extend the app, uh extend the applicable shot clock. Right now, though, I don't have the exact number off of my head, but it's very close to the full length of the hundred and fifty days because we told it immediately. Without having the visual resource assessment.
To get a balloon test, that took months.
Exactly.
So I think we have a. We have a plan. Did that answer all your questions?
Very helpful, thank you, and. The one more question on the variances for the ZBA. I noticed in the.
Take the microphone away from your mouth, it's a little.
I have the opposite problem, like this.
Yeah.
Is that better? And. When I read the uh some legal documents describing what is allowed, including telecommunications towers. Um it said that the tower would have to be obscured. It seemed to me like there would be a variance for the ZBA. That relates to the what the tower looks like essentially, not just. The height of the tower being over one hundred or being away from the road. But also the fact that it's not obscured, that it. Looks like a mental structure and not like.
Trust me, you can't hide yourself. You can't make them go away.
No, you can't make them go.
Look the same, they're either lattice or monopole, and they got the head on them and they all seem to look the same to me, so.
That's not true, there are many different ways to.
Well, you like the Christmas tree branches?
Sorry?
You like the ones that they use, the Christmas fruit branches?
I'm not saying, you know, I'm not saying what it should look like, I'm just saying that it should. You know, there are options to make the tower look more favorable for the landscape.
You have some pictures, please share them.
I'm happy to, yeah.
You have some, bring them up.
Okay, will do, alright, and then final question, um is there anything you would need from us if we would like to speak at the public hearing?
Say that again?
If, no, okay, perfect.
In just one quick response to the the discussion about the camouflage or obscuring the tower. So we did propose as part of this new submission to color the tower brown, as you'll see in the visual resource assessment in the photo simulations. There is a ridge directly to the uh west of where the cell tower is, so for most all views from the east, the brown colored tower actually blends in with that ridge. It kinda makes it invisible, so we do have a stealth design proposed, we did propose some camouflaging of the tower, and that'll be uh presented to the board. Uh at the public hearing and discussed.
Other way, probably like gray or something, match the sky.
If the board prefers that, we can do that as well, this is just an option.
Can you present a couple of options about?
I was gonna say, I would bring color swatches.
So the color swatches we can discuss, but we have the photo simulations that have the color chosen, but.
People will ask to see the color swatches, I almost guarantee.
I I I understand, I've I've often uh offered to paint the towers the the high school football team colors, so whatever. Whatever colors you want, we're very open to painting it whatever color you you is chosen.
Any other camouflage during?
So no, so uh the some of these with a hundred and fifty foot tall tower, it gets a little tricky, so monopine, that's the the Christmas tree. Um we we do use those, those are something we can discuss, yep, there are, we call it the.
Beautiful.
The Frankenpine on the hutch is what they call it. The, on the hutch? I think it's a hundred and twenty-five plus, but I'd I'd have to guess, that that tower's actually built thirty years ago, right at the beginning.
The station right before.
Yeah.
The mobile station right before, they couldn't even put the tower up.
So we do have other options, you're limited, though, with a cell tower that looks like a tree, because we're on farmland that's mostly cleared. Uh it'll stick out, so usually you do the monopine when you're in like a forest or you're on a mountain that has like a lot of trees on it. Then you can kind of blend it in with other trees, again, the tallest tree I think in America is less than a hundred and fifty feet tall, so right now, even by. Doing it as a monopine, it would stick out, because it'd be a little bit taller, the idea for other tower designs come with uh if you're in. Um if you're in like a community that has a, an existing tall uh building, sometimes you can make it look like a. An HVAC equipment or a penthouse on a building, um it it you're really kind of.
Try to hide those too.
Exactly, I mean, it you're really limited to where you can go, um so right here for this cleared area, what we did, we reviewed. We could do the galvanized steel or we could paint it to match the sky, but we were looking at most of the views, and we'll go through this in the public presentation. The ridge that's directly to the west is completely kind of acting as a backdrop, so by matching color to the backdrop. That's basically the best way we can camouflage this, by using the scenery and the using the existing vegetation that's here.
Oh, I had one quick question, the engineer brought it up about the height of the tower and the distance from the right away.
Sure.
Is there?
So, yep, so we have it uh an answer to that in the uh the responsive submission, so it is uh more than uh. The the what we did was we did hinge point for the tower, so in the unlikely event that the tower collapses, it will collapse in on itself. So the the tower will not, again, in the unlikely event of a collapse, will not fall across the property line.
It's not gonna collapse from the foundation.
Correct, it won't collapse from the foundation, there's gonna be a structurally designed hinge point or weak point in the tower, so that if it did fall, it would collapse in on itself. Most of the weight on the towers at the top, because that's where all the equipment, the cellphone and towers, uh cellphone antennas and their equipment. That's kind of the the main kind of support of the capacity, so it'll collapse in on itself. We we do have an engineer letter that speaks exactly to that.
But um uh someone had seen the cuts and suggested uh might work in this situation, there's something called a stealth flagpole. And and that is um it's a monopole that can go up to a hundred feet. And what the difference is, there are no antenna sticking out the top of it, the antenna, the pole is designed to. Um enclose antennas, so you eliminate all the unsightly unsightly antennas that are sticking off the top. Um it's it's an, it's another way to approach camouflage or what would work, so um. I think it's a, it's an option, I already, the CAC already did. Uh discuss or write this up for the ZBA as a possible way to approach um obscuring a tower. So it's it I it's a little more expensive, but they're asking, you know, they're asking.
So they do those more often at shorter towers, usually less than a hundred feet because of the flagpole, um so this was actually discussed at one of our first meetings. So here, again, with a flagpole design, what you're doing is you're vertically stacking the antennas, we have all Verizon antennas at one same centerline elevation. Um they can have up to nine to twelve antennas, maybe even sixteen, um so you can have a lot of antennas at one centerline elevation, meaning. They have a better chance to provide their service, with a uh a. A flagpole or unipole where the antennas are internal, you can only do one or two antennas in a space, and so then you have to vertically stack them.
You can co-locate.
So you can co-locate, but the tower's gonna have to be dramatically taller, so you're talking about a hundred and fifty foot monopole, we're probably talking about a hundred and eighty. Hundred and ninety foot flagpole, there also is, when you do a flagpole, you have to do uh American flag etiquette, which means we have to light the flag at night. So that means we have to ground light and shine a light up to the flag at night, at dusk every day, so now you've created a more visible. Um kind of cell tower, and usually we put those kind of flagpole designs at. Public buildings, you see them at police stations, municipal buildings, in the middle of a farm, it would stand out.
I'm sure.
Um I did hear that often the stealth flagpoles go up, they they raise a flag for three or four nights or three or four weeks, and then it just doesn't happen.
Well, it, yeah, but if a flagpole without a flagpole, then then we just have a hundred and eighty, hundred and ninety foot tall pole.
It actually looks like a flagpole.
No, yeah, exactly, that's one of the stealth designs, exactly, ornamental on the top, um but again, usually I see those. You know, sometimes we get tall ones up at a hundred, hundred and twenty feet, and they sometimes do come without the flag, but um. It'll reduce the co-location potential and it necessitates a much taller tower, um because we have a variance here for the height of being. A one hundred foot set by the code, we have a requirement under New York State law to minimize our height. Um so a hundred and fifty foot centerline height is the minimum height we would need for Verizon, um if we went there, you'd have to stack the antennas above. So then we would be pro- uh proposing a tower taller than what our minimum height necessary is, and taller than what the code allows.
But we we don't know that a hundred fifty feet is the minimum necessary, we haven't looked at our consultants and your maps, so.
No, no, I'm saying what we put forth is a hundred fifty, that correct, you have to verify that and and review that.
Correct.
May, you know, we, that's absolutely a topic to be discussed, I'm not saying that's a fact, but. We have to minimize that, and when we're at a position where a hundred foot is set by the code, um we do have to make sure we're proposing a design that minimizes the height.
We have one piece of housekeeping I'd like to discuss on this application, so you're certainly welcome. The cell consult. There was never resolution.
Well, yeah, this would be a good, I wish we had Sarah here. What I understood was that at the town board meeting, they denied our. Request for the cell consultant that we chose.
Yes, for um.
Cityscape.
Cityscape.
They deny it, or they wanted to just make sure that.
They tabled it, they, I spoke with supervisor MacArthur, they tabled it um for the purposes of considering issuing an RFP. To see if they could find other alternatives, um there was some concern that this was a consultant that of. A few consultants, this is one of the consultants that we had recommended to the board based on our experience in the industry. Um and I I do understand that Sarah had said that she tried to look for her own consultants, um but this. The one that we had provided was the most responsive one to her requests.
Well, let me give you a little more information.
Okay.
That we did send out an RFP, I don't know who wrote it, but it was came from somewhere on the town board. Um there was ten or twelve or fifteen people on the list, and we got a response from Isotrop.
I I don't recognize that off the top.
I read through their proposal, it wasn't, first off, they don't have a PE, which they. Would have made them disqualified to start with, because that was something that they put in, that they have a head of professional engineer. And they're disputing a tower in Spencer Town, so that's their claim to fame. I don't think there's a resolution, but they spent more time. Trying to find other alternatives for the applicant, I don't think that's our job to find other solutions for your design. We review your design and say yea or nay, or comment on how maybe better. Or not, but they spent a lot of time trying to tell the applicant what to do.
Are you talking about in the 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 application they're objecting to now?
Yeah, yeah, where to put it, what else to supplement it with, that's, I don't see that as the planning board's job.
I I agree, I I believe you're reviewing our proposals.
This, we say yea or nay, simple.
Or comments specifically, but yeah.
Yes, comics, yeah, can you paint it purple or green or whatever, or move it a foot this way or put that way, but.
Or how are you addressing this impact or that, yes, correct.
Try to find out the solutions for the problem, because we don't like your solution, I don't, isn't the planning.
And and their qualifications were just that they are objecting to another application?
Well, they had a bunch of stuff.
Oh, okay.
But they had the only ones that.
That responded to the RFP.
Cityscape, or we prefer, did not respond to the RFP, because they didn't like. How they were asking to handle the project, basically, you know, whatever.
They didn't like the parameters of the RFP, the, okay.
Right, so they didn't.
They were the fact that they they felt they couldn't be responsive to the RFP.
What was it, the RFP?
We haven't seen it.
It, I know, I I looked at it the other day and it.
There isn't.
Alternatives.
Where is the RFP?
Uh, I can send you a copy of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was shared with me.
S- so the RFP requested the town hire a consultant that would suggest alternatives to the applicant?
That's, no, that's how it, that's how it came across.
Okay.
But the RFP was lengthy, I it it's available, you know.
So, so what's the status now?
Well, as far as I know, we're nowhere.
Okay.
Cityscape will work for us.
If we sign a contract.
And do it there.
Yeah, okay. Do we have to have the town board approval still to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can we go back to them at the next meeting and say, this is what happened, and we have these two options, we think this is the better option?
Well, that's what they 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 required.
They they did an RFP. Except for Isotrop.
But now, I mean, like, we have Cityscape and we have those people, we, after going out, we still think this is the best option, can we please give this approval?
Right.
Hopefully.
Well, we should, but in order to do that, we should see the response.
Can you?
Yeah.
Forward.
Yeah, we've seen it.
Yeah, I have a copy of it.
Or to everybody on the.
Okay.
Um I didn't wanna bore everybody with this lengthy document. Trying to get to a, a solution, so. Um, I mean, I don't know how the board feels, but. I think, I think we. I think we should have a consultant.
I think we all agree with that.
Right.
And that.
And I think it should be the first one we. Collect, so.
Well, that depends on what the town board. Yeah, in our.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't wanna go into other things that were in this Spencer Town, but it was, there was some. Childish comments in there, on their part.
So you'll send, I'm just sending that to all of us, we can take a look.
Yeah, I don't have all their emails, so.
Okay, so then we just make the determination. That we are all still in agreement, that's the need to give it to we wanna go, after we see that, and then.
We gotta show our proof from what we do.
Yeah, totally.
Their other applicants.
Yep.
And then once that presentation could be found more.
I don't know, their next meeting should be in a week or two with this.
Right.
Third Thursday, it's not anybody here, but.
Yeah, two weeks, Thurs- Thursday.
With two weeks from today?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Alright, so somehow we have to get correspondence. I guess to the, why why doesn't everybody look at the RFP?
Yeah.
Give us, that's all this, you know.
Yeah, so we have a.
Yeah, I've, and it's, I think you had the original one, everybody had the original one.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Let's make a decision, because I think.
Do we have to submit that to the board ahead of time?
Yeah, it's gotta be on the agenda, we have to send to Monica and the supervisor, I guess, but.
Um, so I guess we'll just discuss it over email?
Yeah.
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 Yep. Okay.
Alright, thank you so much.
So we'll, the schedule, the public hearing is scheduled for the.
July ninth.
Night, okay, and um.
Nope, okay. Sure. This is a Zoom question.
Oh, Zoom question.
Hey, can you guys hear me, it's Colleen.
Hi, Colleen.
Hey, I've been listening, so I will also help advocate for your decision uh at the town board. So I've been listening to your, to your back and forth, so.
Anything else, Colleen, you'll you'll handle that for us.
Yeah, I've been listening, so so um I get the the gist of why you continue to. Uh recommend that we contract with Cityscape.
Do you know who sent out the RFP?
So I think it was through the CAC, um someone was able to get together a pretty full list of. Of things that, you know, it was pretty comprehensive, but um yeah, and then it was shared with the planning board, I believe.
Uh, okay, the member saw it.
Yeah, we didn't see.
We didn't see.
Shared with me.
Yeah.
At Sarah. And we waited for the results, and we got the one company called Isotrop, let's say you say.
Right.
Isotrop.
Yeah, there's never any guarantee that, you know, you're gonna get responses to your RFP, doesn't always happen, so, and you know. Um and if you're not happy with what you got, but you are happy with one, then that's reason enough to, you know, recommend. You've done your due diligence, I guess, is the what I'm trying to say.
Right.
Right.
Well, we'll, we'll have done it by the time.
Right, right, exactly.
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, I'll go back to mute.
Thanks, Colleen.
You.
Yep.
Just to clarify, did I hear that the town board didn't issue the RFP, but it was the Conservation Advisory Committee?
Oh, I don't know, she didn't.
Okay. Okay, I just wanna make sure it was an official, okay.
I, I saw it, it was already done, we had no input, so.
Understood.
But. We need a motion for the public hearing, to make a motion.
It's a point of order, you should, because it's a uh special meeting.
Yeah, it's a special meeting.
Alright, I make a motion, we have a special hearing about Homeland Towers on July ninth at seven P M.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks so much, see you then.
Alright, I'll I'll be in touch with you early next week with the mailings. Alright. Brock's House, is there somebody here?
Anybody here? Nobody hears from Brock's at Brock's House?
Might be on Zoom. Hey.
Oh, oh.
So sunny where you are.
Yeah, look at that.
Yeah, that's not right.
Always sunny where I am, hi, everyone, I'm Adam Weinstein, I'm the executive director from Brock's House, it's great to see you again. And I am just here to try to schedule a site visit, so you guys can look at the two spaces that we talked about at the last meeting.
Okay, that's your only objective this evening?
That's my only objective, I got a lot of other work done while I was waiting, so.
We didn't bore you.
Well, learned a lot along the way, too.
Okay, I don't know.
So we need to just send out a email, right, to the.
Yeah.
Do you have any restrictions on your availability for site visits?
Campus.
I'll I'll be up there pretty much on Monday for good, so i- it's, you know, i- if you guys can.
I'll coordinate on our end and and let you know, is there a time?
I'll coordinate on our end and and let you know. Is there a time of day that's better or worse for you?
No, I mean, I'm there all the time, unless it's like opening day or visiting day that you're gonna suggest, or.
When when is.
Pretty much all good.
When is when is opening day and visiting day?
Opening day is June twenty sixth. Um, I have a closing day on July twentieth, an opening day on July twenty first, a closing day on August thirteenth. And then two visiting days on Sundays.
Well, sometime before July, June twenty sixth would be ideal for us.
Yeah. That would be great for me, too.
Yeah, we can try and do that.
Our our problem is that if we have more than four members. In a a place at one time, it has to be noticed as a meeting. But we break it up. Then it's not, doesn't have to be noticed as a meeting, but it has to be noticed that it's a sidewalk, so. We can do three. Or we can do one.
You tell me whatever works for you that gets it done.
All right.
Okay.
We're gonna canvass the board, see what kind of dates. Um, you're there on the weekends, too, right?
We. Yeah, we're here. Oh, there's someone.
We you did the canopy thing. We did it in an evening, I think.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Do you have a contact info for me or Crawford or? Both?
Uh, yeah, we have all that. We must have it all. It's on the submission.
Well, I we. We need somebody that can show us the location, if you're capable.
Yeah. Totally.
You know. Somebody put a couple of sticks in the ground so we can see. Kind of where the placement is and the size, that would be helpful.
Yep, we can do that.
I I don't. The one that's way up where the house is going. I don't know if that's cleared or. Forest or.
No, no, I think it's I think the idea is not to have to clear it, so I think that may, I think they're doing it.
Being way up there in that cul-de-sac, it's it's. Yeah, I thought it was clear, but.
We're putting, and there was a a a building called the Yellow, at least called the Camp, the Yellow House, one of the two original farmhouses. They're essentially where we're looking at putting that house up there.
Okay, was that where the chickens were or something?
That I don't know. Now you're you're before my time. Oh, no, the chickens, no, that's a different, different space.
Different space, okay. All right, we we will be in touch.
Do we have?
Terrific.
These right here, do they plan to do one application?
We'll be in touch and we'll make ourselves.
Okay.
Wait, are you gonna do one application or two applications?
I believe they it was decided we were doing two.
Good.
To split them up.
Yeah, okay, good.
Make that.
Okay. Yeah, no. Nation, they 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 only submitted preliminary drawing. Think they're working on further detail drawings.
I don't think we're working on drawings. I think they're working on wetland delineation delineation right now.
Oh, okay. All right, so.
Okay.
We'll do the sidewalk and then. Um, we'll see what happens with them submitting further information for that following meeting.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay. One more, one more. Back page.
That's you guys? You know, my first impression was I was gonna take you guys first because it was gonna be a long meeting and then. I gotta wait for the. And you on, there you go.
Hi, my name is Michael Colley. And I live on Willsey Bridge.
Michael.
Oh, on the X.
That would keep it soon.
Yeah, pass these around so everybody has a couple or something. This is what we're dealing with.
Okay.
Um.
Thank you.
Then run all one more minute. Yeah, there's some drawings here, too.
I I don't know.
Yeah, pass these around.
Drawing.
A little.
Yeah, we can check.
Get them all over here.
This is an existing building?
Yep.
Yeah. It's an.
Yeah, they know that one. He was on another one here.
All right.
You know, it's a background. You got it, Dan?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. You're on. Tell us what you want to do here.
Okay, basically. I'll give you a little bit of history. Uh, this was an original two car garage, one story tall. We decided that we would need more garage space, so we went to three cars and we were going to put a workshop and a storage area over top of it. That's what that plan is for, the storage area and and workshop. While we were thinking about setting this thing up, we decided that we're getting along in years and that it would be smart if we laid it out so that we could live in it. In the wintertime and rent our house or whatever else and come out pretty well. So we went to see Ed and Ed said, yeah, we could do that. We did it and approved it, the building, building. Uh, we had a kind of family emergency and. My daughter moved in with us. And then my daughter worked for the Salisbury Bank and they sent her home for COVID. We ran. No space. We had no place to go. Uh. She moved. Some stuff over into the stored, one of the parts of the storage space. And she was conducting business for the Salisbury Bank. There. Living with us. Little by little, she wound up. Being in there. So we just added a tub and a and a kitchen and she stayed there. Yeah, well, yeah, shower, yeah, shower still, not a tub. Uh, what happened was is. I'm very concerned about. Having somebody live in a place that only has one staircase. So we decided to add a sliding a deck. So that she would have a fire exit two ways out of the second story building.
Good.
Um. We started to build the deck. Kept on building the deck.
Well, that's.
Well, what, no, that's you gotta tell them the whole story.
I know the story.
All right, Ed showed up.
A hundred times.
Yeah, Ed showed up and said. Gotta talk about decks.
Yeah.
Said, okay.
Needed a permit and kind of kept going and it just.
Yeah, it it was not, you know, I've been at this for. A long time. I I'm a slow builder. Anyway, the original building on the drawing has been approved and we have a certificate of occupancy to use it. We just made it. The apartment for my daughter, but we were gonna ask that Angrim to do for us years from now.
So that the original drawing was two thousand eighteen. I gave you a permit to extend the garage.
Yep.
So what you're saying is the interior work wasn't part of that permit?
Well, all the walls and everything was there and we had a bathroom in there. And that was approved by Columbia County and there it was.
Yeah, yeah, the septic.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
What does this have to do?
Yeah, that was my biggest question. What are you doing about?
So why do you need us?
Why do you need the planning board?
Because Ed told me I had to come before the planning board.
Because it became an accessory.
Accessory.
Oh, it's an A D U.
Yeah.
So we have to, but an A D U is in our.
Because it's a special use permit?
I don't know. It's in our thing. It's, don't we say it? We have a whole thing about A D Us.
We we have a thing.
That abbreviated site plan review.
Yeah, but why? I just, I don't understand.
Because it's an accessory apartment.
Even though it's.
It's less than a thousand feet in an attached structure.
Right.
That's how Ed described it, so the whole thing is coming into focus, but. Um.
We're basically approving an apartment that already exists.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, legalizer.
Noted.
Yeah.
You know, life happens.
There was a line on the ground and then there was a wall and then there were windows and there was a roof. But I do something.
Well, actually, we started with a building.
Yeah.
And just.
I do this for a living. I've heard that story many, many times. But my only concern is. What's the septic? Hasn't that worked with this thing?
It has its own septic in uh, uh, Wheatfields. Infantrys.
Or? The work?
No.
It was already there.
That was there, no, that was before the apartment. But after the a garage addition.
So did you connect to the house septic or you put in a septic?
Oh, no, it has a separate Baldwin put in the septic, complete septic.
Okay.
It has its own.
That septic or that septic.
Yep, and that's been approved.
By who?
Columbia County Health Department in Baldwin.
Oh, okay, so you had something.
Yeah, and so accessory building. Within an existing structure are committed with a.
We're gonna. Site plan review. Pursuant to. Article seven.
Yeah.
Where's article seven?
I feel like we say that every meeting.
I know.
Where's that?
There is article seven. That's article five.
Article seven is.
Just trying to find the page number of article seven.
So that one was two fourteen.
But G one B.
Just turned into an apartment.
Mm hmm.
Yes. Was an office. Everybody got that?
Is it completed now?
Well, we're working on the deck.
Okay.
Problem is you went outside.
And we're working on the deck and and the the the. The door is at pages and we gotta get the deck finished so we can get the door.
Yeah.
G one.
G one.
So I see two. Wait a second. It was G what? So G one is on page two fourteen? Ah, here we go.
You got the seal. I guess I gotta sign this stuff.
Yeah. So that's why she gave me.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know what we were dealing with. I didn't know if it was existing.
Oh, this is C. I haven't gotten a G yet. D.
Wow.
Yeah, here, G.
Yeah.
With no lot just.
She's still turning and still.
So G is about a reduction in lot area. G is no lot shall be reduced in area so that it creates a non-conforming bulk or use in violation of any regulations.
Well, that's not relative to that.
Yeah, what does that mean? So what is G one? Let's go back to the A D U thing.
How many square feet does the existing?
It's okay, so it says it, it says it may need an abbreviated site plan if the criteria of Articles seven, G one, B are met. So that's, so it has to meet the criteria of seven, G one, B. Or else we don't need it, so. I didn't, I didn't.
Ed said it, so.
Right, but I didn't see G one B. G just says G. E. So there is no G one B. Wait.
They are two family dwelling, including.
Oh, so where are you? What page are you on?
On page two thirty two.
Oh, I went, oh, I went too far past it. Okay. I was looking.
So here we go. We found it. So the all procedures and requirements for an abbreviated site plan review if they are proposed on a parcel of land in the town of Angrim. That contains more than twenty five percent of the total acreage of the parcel.
It doesn't.
It it doesn't contain the wetland.
No.
Like that.
That's just the requirements of if we have.
Is it within one hundred feet of a high watermark of a stream bank? Are you near the road jam?
Yeah.
It's only B.
But the building.
But B.
But B has all of our, I see, I see.
Yeah.
Right. All right, so so it's not one.
It could be three, though.
Yes. Three.
Actually, I had some. Yeah, okay.
High watermark of a stream bank?
Near the road jam.
I don't think they're a hundred fifty feet from the road jam. I look on Google.
Oh, yes.
Oh, this is the road jam.
Yeah, but between Willsey Bridge and the road jam.
Oh, so the road jam is really close.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Right. So then that does trigger this.
So that's why.
Okay, so then we need it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the the structure is existing. And the septic is already there.
Right, so what can we do? We could just say.
Approved.
Approved. It's, yeah.
Right.
So first we have to, um. Note that the application is complete before we.
Well, I just wish we. Had the dimensions of where.
It should be here.
They're in the.
I can tell you. It is.
No, no, not the dimensions of the house.
But now the dimension, like the distance from the road jam.
Oh, oh.
I mean, I could like do a Google quick Google thing, but.
Could you?
Yeah. Let me just go to Google. What is it called? Google Earth?
And where is the septic relative to the to the barn? So can you come from there where the septic?
Sure. Here.
It's here?
Here.
Okay, so it's on the. The side not closed, not closed road. Where's the road jam over here?
No, right here.
Road jam's back there.
Okay.
Okay, so here we go.
And then the well is where?